Just after.
We're now recording.
I'll start again. Sorry about that. I should have waited. Good morning. It is Thursday, December first, two thousand twenty-two, just a few minutes after eleven AM. This is the appointed time for the second of two public hearings that the state bar holds pursuant to statute and also because we want to hear what the public has to say and offer input on our disciplinary admissions and various other systems on on work every day of the year at the bar. And so we will open up the public comments or section very shortly. I'm going to wait to see whether there are many members of the public who are attending, who would like to address the the assembled group here before we do that or while that's happening, let me ask my colleague from the Board of Trustees to introduce himself.
Hello, I am Mark Tony and I'm a member of the Board of Trustees. Happy to hear any comments that we have today.
Thank you, Mark. Leah.
Sure, Leah Wilson, the Executive Director, similarly looking forward to the comments.
Thank you. Luisa Alfredo.
Good morning, Luisa Repetian. I'm the Board Secretary.
Good morning, Alfred Hernandez. I am a program analyst in the Executive Director's office.
Okay, thanks, everyone. With those brief introductions, we will get started. I see that we have three hands raised so far. There's four. We're going to ask everyone to limit their comments to five minutes this morning so that we can make sure to get through everyone who would like to offer some input on whatever it is that's of interest to you with respect to the state bars business. So first up is Shirlene de Rizendis. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. And I just want to start, I want to applaud the attempts to implement changes to the process for the bar exam applicants to request testing accommodations. However, I strongly oppose a number of the proposed revisions. I also strongly oppose the proposed changes to the internal staff policies and procedures. These changes do not comply, in my opinion, as well as many others that I am in contact with, with ADA guidelines. It will harm those disabled law school graduates who have already spent tens of thousands of dollars and successfully graduated from law school. Please reach out to me and others and talk to us directly so we can tell you exactly what has happened to us over the last three or four years. I have advocated for fifteen law school graduates and I've helped them obtain their testing accommodations. So I know more than the average student or excuse me, more than the average law school graduate, what it takes to get testing accommodations to take the bar exam. The proposed changes are going to now require testing applicants to get new testing done every six months for permanent disabilities, and these are permanent physical disabilities and learning disabilities. That you are you are going to be harming the people that have the most significant disabilities and struggle in their everyday lives as it is. I understand if somebody's requesting an extra pillow or something, yeah, streamline those accommodations, sure. But I know several applicants that have spent over ten thousand dollars and have been tested numerous times in their adult lives and their disabilities are not going away. They don't disappear over time. If anything, they get worse. I myself, I'm a fifty-three-year-old law school graduate. Every single time I have requested testing accommodations, a staff member made errors and not a single time did I get a refund for my nine hundred dollars or my two thousand dollars that I had to pay for hotel accommodations. I had my accommodations approved the very first time. Once the bar approves your accommodations for permanent disabilities and we've jumped through every single hoop that there is, I shouldn't have to do it again because I didn't pass the exam. If I'm going to take it again in six months or in a year, those same accommodations should apply. I understand if you're requesting for new or additional expanded accommodations, yes, require additional additional documentation. But if I declare under penalty of perjury that my permanent disabilities, physical and learning disabilities, are not going to go away, I should not have to spend another five thousand dollars and tens of twenty, thirty hours trying to get a last-minute doctor's appointment. The staff does not return phone calls. They do not apply the proper or the correct policy for these exam applicants. Please call me. I I I need more than five minutes to tell you exactly what has happened over the years. There are lawsuits pending and Benjamin Cohn is one of them, and I've worked extensively with him and other applicants, and he is a brilliant young man who is autistic and he continues to do this fight. Are every accommodation requests reasonable? No, absolutely not. And of course, you should not have to come give accommodations to those people, but you are punishing those that request extra time and a private room. And I strongly encourage you to call me, call us and talk to us before you make permanent changes. And then also, if there's less than an hour of public comment for your meetings, please don't cut us off. Let us talk longer. I worked, I was on the Open Government Task Force in Sonoma County after a thirteen-year-old boy was shot thirteen times by the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office. I worked for nine months on the Open Government Task Force. I know extensively about the Brown Act, the Sunshine Laws, being transparent. The bar claims that they are trying to be more more inclusive and create more diversity for those that are practicing law. But if you leave out those that are disabled, you are leaving out a very significant part of the population. Just because our brains or our bodies aren't perfect doesn't mean we will not make good lawyers. I guarantee you that is wrong. So I know you're trying to cut costs by reducing the amount of staff time and the number of accommodations that you have, but the true number, there was less than two hundred people that had private rooms or semi-private rooms for the bar exam. And that's based on me talking with other people, knowing how many people were at each hotel that had a private room. I had a private room, but guess what? My proctor coughed, sneezed and cleared her throat the entire six hours for three days. That is not keeping up with the spirit of the law. So again, I I urge all of you to sit down with us at a table and talk to us. I've served on the city council on a planning commission.
Thank you for your, thank you for your input. Your five minutes has elapsed. It elapsed. It's clear that you have a lot of passion for the work that you do and we appreciate you take appreciate you taking the time to to share your concerns with us. I'm gonna, there are other people waiting, so I'm going to.
Okay, but when you say passion, that is not the word that I would like you to use because that is you would not say that to a man, and I really don't appreciate that. And you do that at every single meeting, you cut your staff off from presenting.
I mean, you know disrespect, but I am trying to be respectful to the other people who are waiting. Thank you. Mr. Hill, you have five minutes, please. Thank you. I think you're on on mute, Mr. Hill.
Well, thank you. I am.
There you go.
Thank you. Oh. I guess I'm sort of disappointed at the attendance. I hear loud and clear that there is a desire to hear public comment, but it does not seem to actually echo through internally. I appreciate that you are here. And I will speak to that. I've wasted time mentioning it, but it's an obvious obvious lack of actual engagement here from the bar's perspective. I will give a moment to I believe her name is Mr. Linsky, the prior speaker. Not my issue, but I think that she actually erroneously asserts that it would be reasonable for Calmar to ask for additional evidence from a prospective test taker who's required to retake the bar. So that would indicate that the actual test-taking accommodations were not actually successful. And so I would assert that is, in fact, the bar's rule to establish specific criteria and offer those services sort of carte blanche or à la carte to a student. That's actually a fulfillment of the role of protecting the public. That's my assertion there. I will now go to the the longstanding issue that I have had here. I'm surprised. What has started as something that quite frankly would not be any case at all should not have involved the bar, other than perhaps it writing a letter to say comport yourself with the law. The problem would have disappeared, would have gone away. But again, we're here today clearly, and thank you for the additional time. I was happy to be able to give it to others. We're here today because you can't do right. And that's really what the strange thing here is, is that it's hard to come up with a mechanism, a way in a case that's so constructive like this one. Because again, this is not something where I'm looking for bad actors. In fact, every step of the way in my naive hey, I'm thinking that the person talking to me is is on the up and up. But the reality is, we sit here twelve hundred days later talking about, and where is general counsel? Again, I don't feel like I'm being taken really seriously. I I mentioned yesterday to to a party that, you know, you can put your hands over your eyes and pretend the train's not coming, but it really is. And you brought it on yourselves to it. Of I think it's axiomatic that there's sort of a framework to look at active participants in conspiracies, both intentional or not. That framework is real established. We've talked about it. I sent out my public written comment, which I incorporated into this this meeting at this time that you I think received yesterday. The majority of you. Nobody wants to answer honestly with candor as required by statute. Did you receive my email yesterday or not?
Anything that you've sent to the Board of Trustees has been transmitted to the board by the Board Secretary, so thank you for that.
And thank you for the response. So difficult to be honest. Strange times. Strange times. So the hard part is understanding what the extent or scope of corruption in a Rico conspiracy is, how the people who really just benefit but don't actually take action, right? How they can be identified. But the circumstances here are very, very specific and very fortunate, at least for me, in that now if people don't act in accord to their duty, they're culpable. There's no veil. If you knew about it, had a duty to act prior and didn't act, you were culpable then. But now, if you know about it, had no idea before, but you know about it now, have a duty to act and don't act, you're culpable. Axiomatic. It's a really strange things. I remember first-year contracts. Torts. Actually, it was torts. I'm sorry. See, I'm not going to pass the bar. And but it's the old Cardozo Andrews problem, scope. Scope of foreseeability, zone of foreseeability versus the duty to all. And here, it's hard to see an actor that's a miss omitted, right? That doesn't really actually take action.
Mr. Hill, I'm going to, your five minutes have elapsed. I'm going to thank you for your comments and move on to Ms. Center Claudia Center, please.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. This is Claudia Center. I'm the Legal Director of Disability Rights Education and Defense Fund and have a lot of experience like the prior speaker Shirlene, working with students seeking testing accommodations. And I participated in the LSAC, the DFEH versus LSAC litigation. I want to review quickly a few items that are important for the state bar to come into compliance with the ADA regarding testing accommodations. The state bar says that it wants to follow the LSAC Consent Decree and Best Practices Report and the DOJ Guidance, but in fact, the proposed rules are really far away from that standard and really far from the LSAC policy. So, for example, under the guidance and the LSAC settlement consent decree, there should be deference to treating or examining consultants over the, sorry, I misspoke, to treating or examining professionals over the in-house or outside consultants retained by the state bar, and that's not in the proposed rule. There should be deference, including automatic grants of prior accommodations granted in similar testing situations. The state bar has a truncated list of such standardized tests and drops off the grants after five years. The state bar rule does not include the MPRE or the First Year Law Students Exam, which are both very relevant to testing accommodations. And they don't include standardized, they don't include timed closed book exams in law school, which they should include that they should defer and give automatic grants for those. People are planning their lives, taking the LSAT, going to law school with a set of accommodations, and then they come to the state bar and are not granted those same accommodations and can't demonstrate their abilities. And so we've opened the pipeline in with the LSAT and the law school, and now people, the pipeline is closed when people get to the state bar exam. The procedural changes are very concerning. We need non-staff review of denials of testing accommodations. Also, the five-year window, the state bar proposed rules say, oh, you don't consider prior grants of accommodations that are more than five years prior. There's no basis for that, and that will cut out a lot of people who have gotten accommodations on prior standardized tests, but perhaps took law school at night, part-time, or took some time off. And there's no basis for it. The the standard is to go back and consider documentation or grants. You know, back to age thirteen, there's no like five-year window is gonna really exclude people. And I definitely endorse the comments made by the prior speaker Shirlene. That's very consistent with my experience, and thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Center. I will note for the record that a couple of members of the trustees have joined, have joined the hearing. Juan de la Cruz, I think, popped in near the beginning of Mr. Hill's comments and Vice Chair Brandon Stallings has just joined us as well. So thank you. Gentlemen, is there anything you'd like to say by way of introduction before we ask the next public speaker? Okay. Juan.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Tyler G. But before, well, let's let let's let Tyler go and then I'm going to hand hand the microphone over to our executive director, Ms. Wilson. Go ahead, Tyler. Welcome. Good morning.
I just want to start off by saying that I'm not exactly sure why there are so many allegations against this board. I continue to appreciate your hard work and responses to public comment. I can see the hard work on all of your faces and in my life, so please stay in the fight. That said, I would like to take this opportunity to address the board regarding some value judgments that were made by the Program's Chief with respect to PLLs who have not yet met the MPRE and moral character determination requirements as of now. First, I was shocked when the Program's Chief called the reference class of PLLs entitled after having heard their sincere and compelling testimony in support of extending the PLP. Second, the arguments that the PLLs should have completed all of the requirements by now is juxtaposed to the entire spirit and intent of the PLP in its current form. Moreover, there are applicants who have passed the bar but not the MPRE and applicants who have passed the bar and the MPRE but have not yet received a positive moral character determination. And outside of the five-year post-bar limit this body just agreed to do away with, an applicant can complete the requirements for admission to practice in any order they see fit within the five years before being certified to practice. I want to emphasize this point. The board proposed ending the five-year limit to meeting all requirements for admission to practice, and at the same time, the board proposed a completely new and arbitrary two-year limit for the PLP. The comment is effectively, if something terrible happens to someone at four years and two months post-bar when they had planned to meet a requirement, tough. They should have met the requirement if they could have met the requirement in years one through four. If the five-year limit is five years, but everything should be done much sooner, why not set the deadline to four years and or or one year? If the deadline was one year, would the same argument be applied against an extension if a triggering event for an applicant occurred after the second month of the first year? The PLP extension in May of two thousand twenty-two came with an acknowledgement that offering time for active PLLs to meet all requirements would not pose a significant risk to the public. The board has acknowledged the difficulty some of us face and continue to face. The board has acknowledged that there is no outsized risk to the public and that PLLs do not have a higher incidence of misconduct compared to fully licensed attorneys. We have proven through our actions that we are ethical and possess good moral character. We have also completed the new attorney training and additional mandatory ethics training to further mitigate ethics concerns. We are also supervised by licensed attorneys who monitor our interactions with the public to further allay ethics concerns. It was unnecessary to make a moral value judgment of the participants that continue to struggle for one reason or another. And as someone who has worked diligently and met the requirements of the PLP, including ethics training, I can tell you that the comment was not particularly well-taken. It is also worth noting that if I had passed the bar exam in two thousand twenty when I graduated but had not met the MPRE or moral character determination requirements as of now, I would still have until two thousand twenty-five to complete the same, but my PLL status would terminate on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. At the end of the day, a PLL will still need to meet all requirements for admission prior to being certified and extending the PLP for all active PLLs has no bearing on that fact. The only caveat is that the the bar exam requirement may be removed in a potential future pilot program. The proposal that PLLs meet all requirements, other than passing the bar by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two now, and without notice or any further opportunity to meet those requirements is absolutely unnecessary and harmful to the forty-three active PLLs that have not met all requirements for of being certified to practice. The reasons to extend the PLP for those currently enrolled in it were good enough without raising this non-issue, making moral value judgments against us and casting a pall over the good work that we have done. And in the spirit of ongoing change, I requested the board consider further recommendation toward extending the original PLP for all active participants that currently meet the PLP requirements, not just the requirements to be certified to practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler, for taking the time to address us. I see no further hands raised. I would like to ask Ms. Wilson to generally address some of the ADA issues and concerns that have been raised. I know that this is not the time to to litigate or relitigate or even discuss with a lot of detail individual cases. But there seems to be a theme here with some of the some of the comments. And so, Ms. Wilson, if you have anything to add, I would be appreciative.
Sure. I mean, I think the general theme is that there is significant improvement needed in this area on the part of the state bar. And the rules proposal that was referenced that's currently out for public comment is an attempt to move in the right direction. I think what we've heard today is some feedback that the proposal does not go far enough or is not sufficient. We currently are in a public comment period, so I would hope and expect that those that we've heard from today do submit public comment. And then I think the board will need to weigh that comment when you receive it back with staff's recommendations, any revised recommendations pursuant to the public comment period around some of the specific issues that have been raised, including the recognition of prior grants. So we we are in a comment period, and I expect us to fully vet these issues with the board when things return from public comment. So I don't know, Chair Duran, if that's sufficient for you, but that that's certainly my feedback. I think there's some legitimate concerns being expressed and we'll we'll need to see what happens after public comment. I did also want to speak to the PLL issue. I've had the opportunity to have a bit of email exchange with the last individual who spoke, and what I indicated was that the board had taken its action to adopt recommendations to submit to the Supreme Court and that the state bar will be submitting, in fact, today the package to the court reflecting the board's actions. But what I committed to do was to include the comments received, including from Tyler, Tyler G., sorry, I don't have your last name to the court, so that the court itself can see and hear directly from him and other individuals who've expressed some concern about the specific parameters reflected in the board adopted options. And we're very open to the court deciding that we were perhaps too restrictive. And I do apologize for a perception around value judgments. Obviously, we don't want to be in that space, and so I apologize for that. But as I said, the board has taken its action. We will advance the proposals to the court along with this kind of public comment and see what the what the court decides.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. And before we move on to our last member of the public who has their hand raised, I do want to just assure folks that the the full Board of Trustees does get information about each of these hearings after they transpire. They are also made part of the public record, including the written comments that we've received. And and I trust that my colleagues on the board do take all of the commentary and the input that we've received into consideration carefully into heart. So for all of those of you who have spoken to us today and who have submitted written comments, I really do appreciate the opportunity for for some, you know, for some receipt of information that's important in our processes. Finally, we have Mr. Benjamin Cohn. Mr. Cohn, you've got five minutes. Once your microphone is activated. Good morning.
Good morning. I wanted to respond to, I guess, the perception of the Executive Director that the substance is that maybe the proposal doesn't go far enough. I I can't speak for everyone else, although I think a lot of other people are also responding to the fact that I'm concerned. But for me, the admission rule part that you're saying is out for public comment, and I haven't seen the call for where you submit the written comments yet, is not substantively of not going far enough. It's actually affirmatively harmful. They, those changes make an already bad situation a lot worse. And I have gone into some amount of detail in prior comments as to exactly how and why that I don't want to spend the whole five minutes rehashing. But because I have other things I want to say, but the but that part, that's not a correct perception. It's not that it doesn't go far enough. It's that it makes it worse. Now, it is an accurate perception, I think, to say for the staff policies that have been implemented based on the forum guidance around it, sort of to give it cover in my perception for the detrimental changes that those could be described as the right direction, but not far enough. And I did, since I ran out of time previously, want to go into a little bit of that. Those policies are right now, aside from their excessive exclusions, only applying to previous grants from testing entities of fifty percent extra time and semi-private rooms. Everything else, it doesn't even apply to. There's a lot of accommodations that are reasonable that are excluded by those two things. Most physical disabilities, we need things other than that. For example, the I I get that maybe the learning disabilities, the ADHD, those are the most common accommodations, but a lot of other accommodations should get approved without the current excessive documentation and process if other testing entities have granted them. There's pretty compelling evidence under DOJ guidelines. The but then even when you narrow it to those two accommodations, there are a lot of redundant, not narrowly tailored exclusions to testing entity grants to get benefit from that policy. The five-year one that Claudia spoke to is one of them, and it's not reflected in the DOJ guidance. And but more importantly to me, it's never going to even be relevant if the disability is permanent and the applicant is certifying that they still have the same functional limitation, which are also co-re requirements at the same time in the proposal. The other exclusions around it applying are if a testing entity denies it, even if every other testing entity has granted it, it then excludes, but it doesn't give any scrutiny to whether it was even requested by the testing entity that didn't approve it. Maybe there were different standard conditions, and certainly applicants shouldn't be punished by one discriminatory testing entity if they have. if they have strong evidence from all the others, or at least one other from a high-stakes exam or another bar exam. The, it also identifies certain accommodations as needing exceptional need standard that instead of what best ensures a level playing field, that the ADA doesn't allow. And I also, speaking of what the ADA allows, I also say, want to say that it doesn't protect the public and disabled members of the public for the state bar to be challenging the constitutionality of the ADA, which the Ninth Circuit just certified that the state bar is doing in order to request a brief from the DOJ expressing the views on that issue. So for all of those reasons, both the substantive proposal for staff should be expanded and the admission rule should be, changes should be rejected and replaced by a different proposal that actually remedies what it's trying, what they say it's trying to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Appreciate your comments. All right, that brings us to the end of the hearing this morning. Again, thank you to my fellow trustees and, and the state bar staff for attending, and especially thank you to all of you who've joined us. Your comments will be made part of the official record and the state bar board of trustees as a whole will certainly receive this information. If there's nothing else, I think we will sign off. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.